Good evening. This is the October 4th, 2018 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, a meeting in town council chambers. It is now 7:05 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Commission please introduce yourself, starting in the right...
Kenneth Wilk, Alter.
Jonathan Formicella, Alternate.
Bruno Maeney, Commissioner.
Leanna Browsy, Commissioner.
William Porter, Chairman.
Val BSC, Secretary.
Dr. Riley, Vice Chairman.
Will Agresta, Planning and Zoning Ministry.
And tonight, we are seating Jonathan Formicella. Next up, organizational and administrative matters. We have nothing. General public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the Commission on an issue that's not related to a open hearing? That's not you. No one? Okay. Item number four, a general appointment. 387 Main Street, discussion concerning a potential zoning regulations, text amendment to permit mixed-use commercial business with a residential component in a B1 district.
Chairman, members of the Commission, Ray Marizio, and I'm with Kevin Solely with regard at the property at 387 Main Street. Let me see, Kevin, we pull some of this up. We've met with staff and some of the administration, talked about moving forward with, looked at your POCD, and looked at possibly trying to move a project forward that would allow for a mixed-use project in a combination of rentals, apartment rentals, and some retail. The property at 387 Main Street, I'm not sure that everybody was, but if you can recall a while ago, this was approved as a hotel. I think it was 28-room hotel. And the property sits up on a kind of a bluff, well-offered from the street, and it's all B1, surrounded by RRF around the outside, but it's very well buffered, heavily tree. It's got commercial in front, and it's kind of also on the entryway toward your, what I think one of your most vital commercial ways, meaning where you have that whole Stephanie Center right there, which is, if you move just a little bit north, you have Clock Tower, you have basically all the type of retail that you would like. If you look in your POCD, there's not requirements, but goals to basically bring about a mixed-use development to provide all sorts of housing stock into the town of Monroe. Currently, we have some condos. I would say probably 90% of the housing stock is single-family homes, and there's really not a... And then there's a goal also to provide housing stock that will service people for their entire lives. So there's no really place for someone to downsize and rent, and likewise with younger people moving into town. We thought this was the perfect spot. It's buffered, really the B1 zone allows, I don't want to say residential uses, but a hotel which is a commercial use, which allows people to reside in the site. And we thought that this would be the best site to kind of bring in a development that we could keep within the footprint of the hotel, actually lessen the limits of disturbance, and provide more than adequate parking to bring a, you know, primarily one- and two-bedroom apartment-style building into town with retail on the first floor. And we would come to the, we'd work with staff to establish an amendment to your B1 regulations that would allow a retail, a residential component in a mixed-use. Most of the towns that I've been working with have been really orienting toward a couple things. That's, we don't really have transit-oriented districts here, meaning that we don't have rail, and we're not on, you know, the Meriter 95. But what people are looking for to, is this is, you know, one of your major, this is certainly one of your major corridors. It's also near, what people are really desiring is to be near amenities, be near restaurants, be near stores, be near everything that they use on a daily basis. And we think that this is a very good location. We also think it also doesn't, you know, impede in and enter into your single-family neighborhoods. So it's a good transitional use, and we think it's something that makes a lot of sense. We spend a lot of time with the administration. We look at all the towns, mixed-use is really going, the way it's going to go. Retail itself, as you know, has changed. The big-box retail, which we all know about, where anything that you can order on Amazon is having trouble being sold in the stores. But the delis, the restaurants, the salons, all what we used to refer to as the mom-and-pops are the strength of your retail. And with that goes to people to service those things. So we think the combination of that type of retail, along with residential, would thrive, and also not be, by limiting it to, say, one- and two-bedroom units, you, and smaller units, you're going to not have any impact on services. Yet you'll also be a very good tax generator for the town. For all those reasons, we'd like to come before you with an amendment, and wanted to kind of feel the temperature of the Commission as to receptiveness of the idea. I think you have receptiveness in your idea as far as your POCD. It's kind of, it's one of the goals. And I guess it's probably the best way to go forward.
We've had a couple of other property owners express interest in a mixed-use concept in the past, and it had mixed, it was received differently, you know, by different members of the Commission. Some were against it, some were for it. When we spoke to those people in the past, it was more people who had commercial properties, and they were looking to use it almost as an auxiliary or accessory. You used to have some upstairs apartments. So it was a smaller portion of the actual building. So mixed-use, but it was probably more like a 25 residential and 75% business.
Right.
And I can't see what you have on your floor plan there.
It would not be, it would probably be, probably flip-flopped almost. And one of the things that you have to, and you'll see, and I'm sure Will is probably is aware of it more globally, is that a lot of towns really struggle with rentals. And the problem is, the only rentals they have in town are either failed or vacant condominium projects. And there's a big difference between having an apartment community and having something with the amenities that would go with this that people want. And we don't have, you don't have that. We don't have that concept in Monroe. And I've been, it's been very active. We've got a couple of projects that have been approved in Fairfield that have been tremendously successful. All the studies that I have seen on apartments, meaning Trumbull, Monroe, Trumbull, Fairfield, Stratford, other towns that have embraced the concept of non, just a non-single-family-oriented base, have proven to see that, you know, you get less than 5% of the units would even have a child. Typically, these smaller units, you might have a child, but you're not going to have a school-aged child. And it's really addressed to young couples and older families who have links to Monroe. For example, somebody's a snowbird, and they live half the time down in Florida, but they have a fam, their grandkids are up here in Monroe. They don't necessarily want to be supporting the house, but they have an apartment to come to. And they don't want to rent a house, but they have the ability to come and go as they please. A young teacher wants to live in town, doesn't have the time or the money to maintain the house. Yet what you end up having is you service a large segment of your population. You allow people with, I always say, want to say, they may not be living in Monroe, but they have time to live in Monroe and enjoy Monroe. And it's a great revenue generator for the town.
Couple of other ideas that were kicked around over the last four, five, six years, actually going as far back as our last POCD, is, you know, establishing some village districts. Another possibility would be an overlay zone. I think we have to be careful with a across-the-board text amendment for the commercial zone, because, you know, we have pretty diverse commercial properties.
Correct.
And what might be suitable in one particular property in a B1 zone might not be suitable in another property in that zone. So we have to be really careful making an across-the-board text amendment.
Oh, Chairman, this is probably one of the, one, an excellent example about it, and I should say, you know, kind of, when I, as you talk and look at a property like this, it has all, all the characteristics of something you would dip your toe in the water from. It's well buffered, it's got adequate parking, it's going to have, it's very low impact in a situation where the property's already been tested, in effect, as a hotel, versus, like I said, like you said, opening it up to the town. We would certainly be amenable, and certainly would explore with staff the ability to create a very strict overlay, or to have strict guidelines that you could find to be eligible for this overlay, that you could identify properties that may be subject to it.
One of the other benefits too with Monroe, obviously, well, one of the benefits from a control standpoint is that because we're a community without sewers, the applicability of this type of, you know, residential use on a lot of commercial properties isn't really a viable option because of septic capacity. So that's a kind of an added control measure that would be built in to really further restrict the potential or propensity for this to kind of come in on a larger scale.
For example, here, I think, what do we have? The ability to, what, how many, 40, how many bedrooms do we have?
Forty-two bedrooms.
Forty-two bedrooms. On a parcel this size, if there were sewers, the number would be limitless. You have, Kevin brings in an excellent point, is you have built-in controls with regard to being able to control density. And I think we'd like to come before you with, discuss with staff, and hopefully you, through staff, your issues, that we either come in with either an amendment to your B1 or an overlay. I think that would, probably we would want to go into B1 with restrictions, conditions, and discernible areas.
Well, if this were to go to the next step, it would be a meeting with the Regulations Subcommittee.
Okay.
That would be the next step.
Okay.
But let's hear what, I mean, for what I have to say, let's, you know, I'm one of the eight, so let's hear what some of the other people have to say.
Well, you're saying this is going to be like more housing than it is retail? Because there's always a lot of retail right there right now.
Correct.
And there's one like right below it.
Correct.
And so far, it's still empty.
Correct. I think, we believe it's important to have this kind of, a little bit of a mixed component with regard to having some available retail services available to the building and to the local area.
I mean, I'm okay with like the apartment part of it, because there are a lot of people out there that, that's all they want to do is just rent a little small place. So that part of it, I'm good with, but the store, I mean...
We'd be com, we're comfortable also, we'd be comfortable also coming in with just a straight apartment. We just thought that it would, that this, by requiring a, some sort of commercial component that would give rise as a transitional use in a mixed-use versus just a straight jump into the apartment world, which...
Multi-family.
Multi-family world, which historically the Commission has been hesitant to.
Well, you know, we don't normally turn commercial properties into residential properties, especially in the commercial corridor.
The interesting thing, and it's funny, if I can, if you're just, having done this now for about 30 years, is from a revenue generating position, there's a project further south of you in Trumbull that was maybe, was a mixed-use project. They ended up having apartments or condominiums in the back, and they had, the town was so desperate to get retail and restaurants in the front, they gave them the retail and restaurants in the front. I think, believe it or not, 66 condominiums throw about 3/4 of a million dollars in taxes, and all that commercial, all the commercial development probably provides about $100,000 worth of taxes. And there's no kids that came along, come along with the condominiums. So the idea of commercial being also a revenue generator for the town, we believe that this would be an additional revenue generator. We've decided to keep the commercial impact, commercial into it, so that we would have a mixed-use component, so that we truly wouldn't be just turning your, turning commercial into residential. However, don't discount, single-family houses are the biggest tax user in the town, between board bed and all the services that are required versus the commercial. The apartment style, believe it or not, from a revenue or a tax standpoint, are much more like a commercial user when it comes to services, and it comes to the need to employ tax dollars to service the facility. So you do have, apartments in themselves, in and of themselves, have a commercial nature to them. Do you understand, or am I just confusing? I don't mean to be confusing, but...
No, I get your point.
Well, the only thing I'd be really concerned about with the business part of it is, we've got so many pizza parlors and nail salons and choke a cow here. You know, what's going to go in there? Something different? I mean, if that's the case, you know...
It's going to be, it, you know, put it this way, if you can get it on Amazon, you're going to be hesitant to put it in a store. If it's something that you have to go to and you personally have to see, that's where retail's being driven now, except for very specific matters. We just thought, from a transition standpoint, meaning to introduce apartments, that this would probably be, you're in an area that's highly trafficked, you're in an area that you're not infringing upon the single-family neighborhoods, that your commercial corridors will provide that. And providing, bringing apartments to that, we thought that the Commission would be more comfortable to at least have some sort of commercial enterprise within the buildings. We'd be comfortable either way, though.
I mean, my thoughts are that new and innovative ways to use spaces in town are very important, and as the Commission goes forward with the new Plan of Conservation developments, important to identify what the town can do in that regard. My only concern is, and that's the concern that will be taken up in the Subcommittee if you bring a potential text amendment, is just providing the necessary protections that the town requires, in trying to fit that mixed-use, which could be a great thing. And I'd love to see other things, information about how that mixed-use is affecting other towns and what it's doing for them. I think that will help ease, at least my opinion, as to the text amendment. I don't know, I'm torn. Mixed-use could be a great thing, mixed-use could be, could be a bad thing. Obviously, it's pros and cons to everything. I guess when you come forth to the Subcommittee, I guess if we could be really specific on what exactly you're looking for. Are you looking for senior housing, are you looking for, 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 you know...
Arguably, before all the different types of housing.
Yeah, all that kind of stuff. You know, if we're going to go to, you know, low-income area or something like that, then I don't think that would be the greatest idea. But if you're saying where you're going to put in more for those people that are coming home from Florida, or a guy who just sold his house and needs a place to live, to be with his grandkids, but he doesn't want to have the house anymore, like, I think those ideas are great. I guess we'll see when you guys come forth to the Subcommittee and go...
Like I said, one of the things, as I said, we, if the Subcommittee, dealing with the Subcommittee in this Committee, if you felt more comfortable that it'd overlay in a very strict, dip-your-toe-in-the-water-type control regulation, that they'd be, that you'd be comfortable with the apartment concept, as we're discussing with you tonight, without the mixed-use, we, I think we would certainly, that was something we would certainly entertain. We just thought it was, like I said, since it was...
But at the end of the day, if you're going to put a commercial spot in there, and you're going to put space in there, you know, we're not here to tell you who to put in there.
Oh, I got you.
Right, you know, so if you put in a pizza parlor, you put in another coffee shop or nail salon, I mean, it is what it is. We can't tell you who not to put in there, you know. I just, I just get more concerned about who's going into the apartments. So if you had a mixed-use, I'm not overly against mixed-use, and I'm not overly for mixed-use. So right, until we get more specific on it, I don't really have an opinion on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've talked about mixed-use already in the Subcommittee. We haven't really got that deep into it, but we know about the need for it, and the quarters and stuff like that, too. But we haven't got that really, we haven't really sat down and got through that, so that's probably your best bet is to start off in the Subcommittee.
Okay.
Could someone open that door, please? Thank you.
I'm certainly open to it. I'd like to know a lot, you know, more about it. So I am open to the idea, and it's, it could be a good thing. I do agree with the Chairman that, you know, a straight text amendment might be an issue because it might set a standard throughout the town, so I think it needs to be looked at, you know, specific for this site, this location.
Yeah, we're not here for something to pop up and hit you in the back of the head that was unanticipated. I've spent a number of years in Commissions where, you know, you, everything, the best idea there doesn't want to, and may be acceptable, doesn't pop up somewhere else.
But I am open to it.
Okay.
Sounds like you'll get a good reception.
Okay.
I think, Subcommittee.
Great. I appreciate your time, and the input's good, and we're going to, we'll get something before, I don't know, Will, about how long before we could get, before a Subcommittee would be.
So does this mean the hotel didn't have viability?
Actually, no. The property owner is, was in the process of securing financing before that construction, and a, another interested party reached out to the property owner unsolicited as a potential opportunity for this type of opportunity. But the hotel was completely viable, that process was moving forward, but when somebody else kind of came in unsolicited and with this idea, obviously, the property owner was interested in at least hearing about it more. But it, by no means is it, was that not something that wasn't viable?
Yeah, because there wasn't many properties in town that would support the hotel, and the hotel was, because it could need things as well, which also was a commercial generator.
Yeah. Thank you very much. We'll meet, we'll discuss with Will, and we'll try and get before a Subcommittee as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Really, thank you for your time.
Okay, continuing, public hearings, we have none. Site plan review and permit amendment modifications, we have none. Deliberations and determinations, item number six, time extensions. SEP 1-07-S, file number 145374, Enterprise Drive. Rafanti requests for nine-month extension. Hello, Mr. Rafanti.
How are you, sir?
I am well, thank you.
I am here tonight to request an extension of time to complete the special exception permit that I received, and I'm in a position that I hope I wouldn't be in right now, because of circumstances with, which is no fault of the Commission, but I need this extension of time to complete this special exception permit. Because of various things that have happened, I've had to issue eviction notices on my property to certain tenants that wouldn't comply with certain things that the Commission had requested, and which they had all rights to do. But I did have the evictions, and now I find myself in a position with my bank, as far as putting up the second building, where they want the first building to be completely leased. And it's not right now. So this is why I'm here before the Board, to request an extension of time that I can accomplish this.
I asked the CEO to just give us a quick report, but he was not in today. How is the cleanup going?
Everything has been cleaned up, as far as what my conversations with the zoning enforcement officer, and we're just waiting to move forward. But like I said, I can't move forward without the financing from the bank, which, right now, because I have that vacancy, and that's why I need the extension.
Okay. Will, do you have any, anything to add?
I don't, unfortunately, I didn't have an opportunity to talk to Joe either to find out the status of where we're at. So whether you want to consider something shorter and get some report, or put it off to another time, that's up to you, but...
Well, nine months would bring us, where are we with the overall timeframe on the SEP?
I think we have like two or three years.
Excuse me?
We have like two or three years left, potential, right?
Yes.
So this would bring you, this nine month would bring you to June?
I believe so.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right, Mr. Rafanti, I think we have the information we need, and we'll...
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you.
You can work on it now.
We can work on it now. All right, guys, we got a request for a nine-month extension.
This is a project that was started and...
This is a, was a, up in the industrial park, it was a two-building project. The first building is done, the SEP is still open for the second building.
There hasn't been any construction?
Not on the second building, no.
But there are other, there were other issues with the property being used different ways, and that's what the cleanup was about.
No, but I'm saying it's not half-built or...
No, no, it's not started.
Right.
So Mr. Rafanti explained that he has, does not have a tenant for part of the building, and that's holding up his financing, which is there by, by holding up the second building, so...
So what's the deadline to start, nine months?
Well, no, the special exception permit, the project has to be completed within five years, but then the applicant can request...
An additional five years, which were, and I think there also was another four years along the line. So we're well within the last few years of extension allowance. So eventually, you'll run out of time.
All extension allowance?
We could probably ask two or three more years, and then that's, if there's no more, then it expires, and we, there is...
Have to go to SEP.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Move to grant a nine-month extension to SEP 1-07-S, file 1453A.
Second. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
All right, call the Board, and certainly Bruno.
Maeney, yes.
Yeah, Browsy, yes.
Forde, yes.
AC, yes.
Right, yes.
Okay, next up, we have SEP 2016-12, file number 1582154164, Enterprise Drive. ELM requests for a one-year extension to complete brine tanks and fuel storage tank, under conditional certificate of zoning compliance.
I don't think anyone's here for this. If you recall, this is a project that Elm came in, they took over a project that never got off the ground, that was being used incorrectly for many years. They have built out, there's two properties, 154 and 164, they've built out 154. There were a few items that they had asked in the amendment process of that to be put off to a certain time, including the brine tank, the gasoline tank, and some storage racks. They had installed the storage racks, they've installed all the ground and connections for the two, the brine tank and for the gas tank. It's really just a matter of bringing the physical structure tank in and putting that in the ground. And they're asking, that had a time limit on a conditional certificate of zoning compliance, which they've approached. They don't have a need for those things at the moment, and are simply asking to, again, kick that down the road. Everything else is done, and everything else is there and operating, and again, so... Everything else is done, and everything else is there and operating, and again, just bringing those things in and putting them in place. It's not affecting the operation, or the aesthetics or anything to this site.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve one-year extension for SEP two thousand sixteen dash twelve, filed fifteen eighty...
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Anything else?
Mayene, yes.
Yeah, Brozzi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lacy, yes. Riley, yes.
Okay, item number seven, bond releases or reductions, we have none. Item number eight, meeting minutes for the September twentieth, two thousand eighteen meeting, we're gonna table that for our next meeting. Item number nine, pending application deliberations and determinations. First up, we have SDP two thousand eighteen dash oh two, file number one two eight five seven four Monroe Turnpike Business District One. This is a project, it's a property consisting of one point four eight acres in a B one zone. Proposal seeks to change from a general retail use to a package store.
You don't have it, right?
They've requested a waiver of the A two survey. The application proposes to update the parking lot, install new landscape control islands, repair and re-strike the parking lot, add a dumpster enclosure, and modify the site driveways. The modifications to the site driveways also require Connecticut DOT approval. No proposed changes to the site utilities. This project is not within five hundred feet of a town boundary. There's no new buildings or structural modifications are proposed. This did not have to go through the Monroe Architectural Review Board. In accordance with the zoning requirements, commission hereby finds that the subject property located is acceptable for the proposed package store use as follows. Subject property is located on more, it's located more than fifteen hundred feet from any other existing or approved package stores. The subject property is not in proximity to use as frequented by minors such as schools and churches. Be required to file for a sign permit for the installation of any replacement or new signage. I already mentioned they're improving the site driveways and parking. Upon filing of their final revised and approved plans with the town, the Z E O would be authorized to endorse an application to the Connecticut State Department of Consumer Protection for a liquor permit to operate a package store. And that pretty much sums that up.
And a bond of three thousand dollars.
Okay, that's a three thousand dollar bond.
The other, the suspended permit, is it still suspended?
Pardon me?
Oh, that's right. I said this is suspended.
Go ahead, nothing to do with your application. Oh, and again, Jonathan here, seated for this, Michael, you are not, because you are absent. So, do we have any other questions, comments?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion.
All right. Motion to approve SDP dash two zero one eight dash oh two, file number one two eight one seventy-four Monroe Turnpike Business...
Five seventy-four.
Oh, excuse me, five seventy-four Monroe Turnpike Business District One, for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, call the roll. For McKellie, yes.
Yeah, Brozzi, yes.
Mayene, yes.
Porter, yes.
Oh, you forgot I was here. Lacy, yes.
Thank you. Next up, SEP two thousand eighteen dash oh seven, file number one six oh two A, four eighty-five Pepper Street, Industrial District One. This is a five point nine three six acre parcel in an I one zone. They're requesting a change in use from the existing non-conforming, single-family residential use to a permitted industrial District One manufacturing and warehouse use. This involves the following activities: construction of approximately four thousand sixty-four square foot indoor crushing and screening processing facility, using the existing dwelling as an office, construction of several connected accessory covered storage bins totaling approximately twenty thousand four hundred and sixty square feet, construction of approximately one thousand nine hundred and eighty square foot accessory open storage bin, accessory outdoor vehicle and equipment storage area, outdoor material piles, and installation of a twelve-foot by eighty-foot in-ground accessory truck scale, new paved site access driveway and parking with associated drainage improvements, new septic system in connection to public water main. Processing of materials onsite will be conducted as follows. Material will be placed in an outside surge pile, material will enter the processing building by vehicle, processing inside the building will include crushing, screening, and sorting. Sorted material will be dispensed via a series of conveyor belts which are retracted inside the building when not in use. Sorted material is then moved from the outside piles by vehicles to the onsite storage bins. Stored bin material will be loaded directly to vehicles for removal from site. Commission has noted the following: this project is not within five hundred feet of the town boundary. The site is red, and notices have been sent to the Commissioner of Public Health and Aquarian Water Company. Rear portion does include wetlands and associated regulated upland review area, and a separate inland wetlands permit was submitted, submitted for and approved by the Inland Wetlands Commission on July twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, and the Monroe Architectural Review Board rendered a favorable recommendation. We held two public hearings, one on August second, one on September sixth. Commission finds the following in respect to the special exception permit general standards: the site is zoned I one, the proposal seeks a permitted industrial District One manufacturing and warehouse use, the applicant has agreed to limit truck traffic from making right turns onto Pepper Street when exiting the site. Following vehicles will be used and stored on the site: three loaders, one excavator for the surge pile, one excavator for the sorting of the piles to bins, a street sweeper, and three trailer dumps and two triaxes. The proposal is consistent with the plan of conservation and development in that it will change an existing non-conforming use to a permitted use allowed in the underlying Industrial District One. Screen fencing and landscaping will be provided to further buffer and help attenuate noise and other visual impacts. The applicant has indicated that the operation of the facility will be conducted within normal business hours, all processing will occur inside the new processing building. However, an outdoor surge pile and end product sort piles will be located outside. The conveyors for the sort piles will be retracted so they may be placed back into the building when not in use. In addition to truck traffic, the proposed facility will generate noise potentially greater than ambient sound levels. As such, the applicant, application proposes sound barrier fencing adjacent to the new processing building along the front and southerly property lines, as well as buffer landscaping. A noise baseline and monitoring during operation will be required. They'll be installing a new subsurface septic disposal system connecting to public water. This proposed new use is not anticipated to generate significant new demands for police, fire, and emergency services. Its approval is subject to the following modifications and requirements. Site manufacturing use is limited to the processing of pavement materials and the warehouse storage thereof. Operations will be conducted within normal business hours, the premises shall not be used as a contractor's office, dispatch hub, yard, or other type of contractor's use. There shall be no materials sorting, processing, crushing, screening, or other physical or mechanical means of manipulation or alteration onsite except for pavement materials as represented in the special exception permit application. Search and sort piles shall not at any time exceed a height of fifteen feet. Storage of manufactured materials shall be contained within the storage bin structures as set forth and delineated on the site plans. The doors shall be maintained closed except for loading and unloading a material. Use of outdoor storage areas shall be restricted to the specific areas vehicles and materials as set forth and delineated on the site plan. An Elgin-type street sweeper shall be maintained at the site and used daily to maintain site conditions and assist in suppression of dust. No storage containers are permitted, and there shall be no onsite retail sales. They have to make some revisions on the zoning compliance tables on the plans, they have to make some revisions to their site driveway cart and sidewalks, and some general revision notes, one of them being all the existing lighting on the office building has to be removed and replaced with dark sky compliant lighting. A noise monitoring protocol and agreement shall be submitted for the review and approval of the Planning and Zoning Administrator, which shall minimum specify the Town of Monroe noise standards set forth in zoning four point three point two A, and how the protocol intends to monitor those standards, the locations on the subject property where noise sampling monitoring would be measured, the means of measurement, prior establishment of a baseline measurement, post-construction measurement for a minimum of three separate days during operation of the processing facility representative of a typical day in full operation capacity, and reporting all findings of measurements to the Planning and Zoning Department, including any adjustments taken or needed to maintain compliance within the applicable noise restrictions. And there's a site stabilization and erosion control bond of twenty thousand dollars. And that sums that up. Any other questions, concerns?
No, sir.
No.
Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve SEP dash two zero one eight dash zero seven, file number one six zero two A, four eighty-five Pepper Street, Industrial District One.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
No. No, sir.
Call the roll.
For McKellie, yes.
Mayene, yes.
Brozzi, yes.
Porter, no.
Lacy, yes.
Okay. Next up, SEP two thousand eighteen dash oh four, file number one five nine nine A, Ben Victoria Drive, Industrial District Three. This is a twenty-four point seven five acre parcel in an Industrial District Three. Proposed use is manufacture, compounding, assembly, and treatment of articles made principally from previously prepared materials, and it's a permitted use in the I three zone. They're proposing an interior manufacturing space of thirty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-two square feet, an office area of four thousand four hundred and twenty-seven square feet, and a warehouse of thirty thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet. The proposed manufacturing facility will process recycled glass into a material used in the preparation of concrete as a fly ash alternative. The proposed facility seeks to operate with three shifts over a continuous twenty-four-hour period. Vaulted deliveries to the site would occur during the day shift, as would tanker filling operations. Filled tankers would be staged, and trucks would be, trailers would be moved out at night. The applicant has proposed to prohibit the use of the northern loading dock during nighttime hours. Traffic impact study identifies a need for some signal timing modifications along Main Street, and widening the radius at the entrance to Victoria Drive, and all improvements on Main Street would be under the jurisdiction of the Connecticut DOT. An air permit from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection is required, as well as a Connecticut DEEP general permit for stormwater. In course of the review, the commission has noted the following: the site is not within five hundred feet of the town boundary. Underlying zoning for the site is Industrial District Three. This property was established as an industrial zone in nineteen eighty-one, thirty-seven years ago. Portions of the site include wetlands and associated regulated upland review area. The proposed building and paved areas are outside of these areas. The subject property is not in a protected public watershed area. The Monroe Architectural Review Board rendered a favorable recommendation, provided screening is placed in front of the equipment on the west side of the building. We held public hearings on August sixteenth and September sixth. The following in respect to the special exception permit general standards: the site is zoned Industrial District Three and has been for over thirty-seven years, present use of which is a vacant but disturbed parcel. The proposal seeks to establish a permitted manufacturing warehouse and distribution use. The proposal is consistent with the plan of conservation and development in that it will provide a permitted industrial use consistent with the underlying I three district use and site development standards. The proposed new building and accessory structures will comply with applicable yard setbacks, height, stories, and coverage standards. Screen landscaping will be provided to further buffer and help attenuate noise and other visual impacts. A small outdoor storage area is proposed, as delineated on the site plans. All manufacturing processing will occur inside the new building. The applicant has proposed to limit its nighttime activities outside of the facility by receiving incoming materials and completing all truck loading of outgoing materials during normal daytime hours only, as well as prohibition of the use of the northern loading zone during nighttime hours. Tanker trucks filled with outgoing product during the daytime hours would be parked onsite for pickup and site removal during off-peak nighttime hours. The application also proposes to augment existing site landscaping by increasing its effect of buffering and screening neighboring residential properties to the north and east. The application, the applicant's application materials include reference to a series of architectural building-related noise mitigation measures which are intended to cut down on the noise, truck traffic coming and going from the facility, as well as while operating onsite, has been identified as generating noise potentially greater than ambient sound levels. Measures to address truck noise include restrictions on use of compression braking and use of visual strobe lights on trucks rather than audible backup system, alarm systems. To further ensure compliance with applicable industrial district performance noise standards per zoning four point three point two A, the commission has identified the need to establish a noise baseline and post-construction monitoring during operation. A new private subsurface septic disposal system in connection to public water are proposed. The site driveway, driveway will extend from the current terminus of Victoria Drive, and adequate off-street parking and truck loading parking facilities will be provided, including deferral of some parking spaces deemed in excess of proposed operational needs. The application also includes the trail crossing improvements within Victoria Drive as previously approved by the commission but not yet installed. Approval of the application will require incorporation of recommendations of town staff and applicable reviewing agencies. and applicable reviewing agencies. Other required permits or approvals may be needed and will be required to be obtained according accordingly by the applicant. The proposed new use is not anticipate, anticipated to generate significant new demands for police, fire, and emergency services. Commission hereby authorizes the deferral and corresponding reserve or land banking of parking spaces to the maximum extent allowed, subject to the future construction of said deferred spaces as shown on the final signed plans and may be determined necessary or appropriate by the commission. Modifications and requirements of approval. Storage of received recycled glass and manufactured materials therefrom shall be contained within the building at all times. The doors for which shall be maintained closed except for loading and unloading of materials. Use of the limited outdoor storage area shall be restricted to the specific areas set forth and delineated on the site plans. All stored materials shall be directly related to the special exception permit use. No storage containers are permitted on the site, and there shall be no onsite retail sales. Additional trees shall be provided along the outer length of pavement edge near the septic fields. Additional trees shall be provided at a closer interval on the northern edge of pavement from the entrance to the end of the northern parking area. The existing buffer landscaping shall be augmented with additional evergreen tree plantings to fill in existing gaps and augment maturing trees. The total amount of deferred parking shall be revised to the maximum permitted, which is now twenty-five percent. The outdoor storage area shall be contained and screened with landscaping. The building roof shall be, the building roof finish shall be clearly labeled, which shall not be shiny or galvanized, and sound attenuation measures to be employed shall be And the applicant is required to place no compression braking signs on Victoria Drive. Traffic directional sign will be provided alerting truck drivers within the truck parking and loading area that audible backup horns shall not be permitted. They have to use strobe light signals. Excuse me. Filing of noise monitoring protocol and agreement: a noise monitoring protocol and agreement shall be submitted for the review and approval of the planning and zoning administrator, which shall at minimum specify: number one, the Town of Monroe noise standards set forth in zoning four point three point two A and how the protocol intends to monitor those standards; two, the locations on the subject property where the noise sampling monitoring would be measured, including any off-site locations if provided; item three, the means of measurement; item four, the prior establishment of a baseline measurement; five, post-construction measurement for a minimum of three separate days during typical daytime and nighttime operation of the facility representative of full operation capacity; and six, reporting of all findings of measurements to the planning and zoning department, including any adjustments taken or needed to maintain compliance with the applicable noise restrictions. There's a site stabilization and erosion control bond in the amount of eighty thousand And that sums that up. Questions, comments?
No, sir.
Item. And since DEEP is going to be monitoring the air quality, I think the challenge should be required, that we should require the town gets reports from DEEP. I don't know if the court reports or what kind of reports are, but we should get those reports. And how the rest of the commission feels, I think that we should get the reports.
Okay. Is there anyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
All right, so we'll add that any reports from DEEP will be, the town will be copied on any and all reports.
Then one other thing is about the noise monitoring. How long does that go on for? Well.
The way it's written is three days, day and night. You can change that any way you feel.
Well, if we get, if we get complaints, can we require them to do another noise study? Can we put that in this? Because we're not there at night, so there's no zoning enforcement on at night, so. Can we require that or not?
I'm not, you can, but I'm not sure how to do that. I mean, what you, what you should do is pick either time and, and you can reassess this after you get these three tests and determine if there's need for more, we can put that in.
Yeah, we should put something that, you know, if further testing is, further testing is, is directed by the commission, shall be performed.
So I would envision they do this testing, and during that testing, perhaps they can come back to the commission, determine the adequacy of that and whether it needs to be.
Or if we, if we start getting a number of complaints that the applicant or the relations, we can request another, or not request, we can require that another round of testing be.
Okay.
And since we're at, since we're going to ask for the DEEP, it shouldn't be just the air monitoring, we should get the stormwater discharge, any reports they have on that too.
That's it.
Anything? All right. Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve SEP dash two zero one eight dash oh four, file number one five nine nine A, ten Victoria Drive, Industrial District Three, with, with those changes discussed this evening.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
No.
No, sir.
No? Call the roll.
For McKella, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Rose, yes.
Porter, yes.
BCS.
Next up, item SEP two thousand eighteen dash oh three, file number one five nine eight A, two oh five Monroe Turnpike, Limited Office Retail, LOR District. This is a eight point six three acre parcel in a limited office retail zone. The proposal seeks the development of a new commercial shopping center with four buildings on two separate lots. The following LOR district permitted uses are proposed: lot number one, a noble gas station with ten pumps under a separate canopy structure; lot number two, standalone restaurant, single tenant building; a multi-tenant retail building; and a multi-tenant medical office building. In addition to the special exception permit site development plan approval, the project also requires commission approval and determination of appropriateness for the following: certificate of approval for the location of a retail gasoline dealer license for a new gas station pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes, and determination of location for an onsite sales and consumption of alcoholic beverages in a standalone full-service restaurant. And the other, there's some additional state of Connecticut approvals: a major traffic generator, Connecticut DOT for any of the work on Monroe Turnpike, DEEP, general permit for stormwater, Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection Restaurant Liquor Permit, Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection Retail Gasoline Dealer License, and Connecticut Department of Public Health for septic disposal. Following waivers of certain applicable zoning regulations are sought by the applicant: waiver of six point two point four regarding the fifty-foot. Could you please leave that door open? Anyone, please? We're required under the Freedom of Information Act to leave the door open because this is an open public meeting. No, we have to leave it open. Thank you. Waiver of six point four point nine C, changing contour within twenty-five feet of property lines; waiver of six point four point nine D, artificial slope greater than four to one within fifty feet of the side and rear property lines; and waiver of six point four point nine E, artificial slope greater than four to one within fifty feet of the front street line. In course of its review, the commission noted the following: the underlying zone is the limited office retail or LOR zone. The site is within fifty feet of the southern town boundary shared with the town of Trummell. Access to the site is proposed via a single shared common driveway, and multiple onsite subsurface septic disposal systems are proposed. Subsurface drainage detention and water quality controls are proposed. Portion of the site includes wetlands, and the applicant has received inlet wetlands permit. And the Monroe Architectural Review Board rendered a favorable recommendation. Commission finds the following in respect to the special exception permit general standards: excuse me. The site is zoned LOR. The proposed uses on lots one and two are all permitted uses in the LOR district. The proposal is consistent with the plan of conservation and development in that it will provide permitted commercial uses on a vacant undeveloped property consistent with the underlying LOR district use and site development standards. The proposed new building and accessory structures will comply with applicable yard setbacks, height, stories, and coverage standards. Site landscaping will provide screening and buffering to adjoining properties. Several waivers related to perimeter grading and rear landscape buffer requirements are sought. Proposed exterior lighting will be dark sky compliant. No exterior audio, music, or advertising streaming at the proposed facilities. And these facilities are not anticipated to generate objectionable conditions by reason of noise, fume, smoke, dust, vibration, glare, intensity, or flashing lights. New private subsurface septic disposal systems in connection to public water are proposed. Project is classified as a major traffic generator and requires an Office of State Traffic Administration certificate, as well as Connecticut DOT approval for the work in the road and the new proposed traffic signal. Adequate off-street parking is provided. The proposed uses are not anticipated to generate significant new demands for police, fire, and emergency services. Commission finds the following in respect to the special exception permit supplemental standards: for the gas station, no onsite automotive service or repair, no automobile body shop, no inoperable or unregistered vehicles are to be stored on the premises, no car wash, no exterior retail sale or displays of merchandise, no rental or sales of vehicles, and all pumps, canopies, and fuel storage tanks must be more than three hundred and fifty feet from any residential zoning district boundary. No outdoor audio or video advertisement or entertainment systems are permitted. For drive-through lanes on the convenience store and the potential retail bank, the drive-through lanes have been designed with compliant separation widths and bypass, and there's no outdoor dining authorized under this application. Commission found the following regards to appropriateness of location for retail gasoline and motor oil sales license: property is located in LOR where retail gas station is a permitted principal use. Site location is not visually or physically near any churches, schools, or other similar facilities. The new gas station will substantially attract passerby traffic already streaming on Monroe Turnpike. Project includes construction of a new sidewalk. The new gas station convenience store building and accessory canopy structures have been designed with an architectural style compatible and consistent with the surrounding residential buildings of the area. And site landscaping will help soften and minimize the extent of asphalt parking and will provide screening and buffering. Commission finds the following in respect to the location for onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages for a full-service restaurant: site is located on Monroe Turnpike, which is a state highway. There are no schools or churches in walking or visible distance from the proposed restaurant. There are no other places in the surrounding area frequented specifically by minors. Proximity of the subject premises to churches, schools, or any places frequented by minors is such as not to constitute a hazard to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Permitted onsite alcoholic beverage sale and consumption will be limited to the standalone. In accordance with zoning six point four point twenty-three, the commission hereby grants the requested waivers associated with perimeter site grading and topography, and in accordance with zoning six point two point four D, the commission hereby grants the requested waiver associated with rear landscape buffer area, area and alternative landscape buffer plan. A site stabilization and erosion control bond in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. And that sums that up. Any questions, additions, comments?
No, sir.
No.
Nothing? All right. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve SEP dash two zero one eight dash oh three, file number one five nine eight A, two oh five Monroe Turnpike, Limited Office Retail District.
Second.
Okay, we also include a certificate of appropriateness. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
No.
Call the roll.
For McKella, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Rose, yes.
Porter, yes.
BCS.
Next up, regulation review and amendment work session. Well, we should probably try to set something up for next week. Are you off on Monday?
Off on Monday and Friday.
Could it be appropriate for me to say something quickly before leaving?
Yes. Is it related to one of the?
The Victoria Drive, understanding that you've approved it, just.
Yeah.
Comment?
It's, no, there's no public input at this point in the meeting. I'm sorry.
Can I make a request for general consideration for projects moving forward? That's based upon a different situation from ten years ago?
Not at this time. If you would like, you can come to our next meeting, and at the very beginning of the meeting, when we ask if anyone would like to address the commission about anything that's not related to an open hearing, that would be the appropriate time, and we would welcome your, your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Wednesday.
And what?
Uh, Lev's okay. Wednesday's okay.
He can't make Wednesday. Michael, what's your schedule look like? Any babies coming?
I never know. The whole house, maybe just do it.
I mean, Thursday's nuts. I can do it, but I'm off Friday, so I was gonna leave, but that's fine.
What about Tuesday?
Uh, Tuesday's not good because they have my kids.
Okay. Wednesday Leon can't make it.
But we can, we can do it Thursday, it's just, we're not gonna be long, right?
No. No, no, no.
Eleven o'clock's early enough for it, right?
You're not working the next day.
What time you want to make it for?
Five thirty.
Tuesday's not good, because they have my kids.
Okay. Wednesday, Leon can't make it.
But we can, we can do it Thursday, it's just, we're not gonna be long, right?
No. No, no!
Eleven o'clock's early enough for you, right?
You're not working the next day.
No, what time you wanna make it for?
Five thirty. Right? Five thirty?
Goodnight, Ken.
Five thirty.
Well, dinner that night.
Five thirty?
Stop at McDonald's on the way out.
I won't be late.
That's right.
Well, we should be out by, no later than Sunday.
Okay. All right. Well, five thirty, seven, can you do it?
Okay. Make sure that, that gets on the list serve.
On the list serve?
Yeah, for the, the meetings. I don't know, whatever, whatever is set up, the meetings automatically get posted to?
Well, they don't really. We have to push them in. We have to push them in.
Okay, well, I don't know, but I want it to go out in that-
I have to tell-
That the town has-
Laura does that, so.
That notifies about meetings.
You have to tell Laura, so.
Correspondence? Anybody having correspondence? Okay. Next item, commission reports, chairman reports. Will put together a summary of the changes to the zoning off-street parking standards. Will, why don't you, no, you didn't get it, that's why I'm telling you about it.
That's why you're staying longer.
Why don't you just, just send that to all the commissioners? It's just a, it's what you already know, but it's just a outline of what changes we've made to the parking standards. Anyone else have anything to report?
No, sir.
Nobody?
No, we're good.
Staff have anything to report?
I'm under the understanding that the Pepper Street business part, I bet, excuse me, the Pepper Street reconstruction project has been brought online.
Oh, good.
So that's supposedly moving forward now.
It's been a couple of years, hasn't it?
Well, it got hung up with money being held, even though it was funded. But yeah, it's been a while. From my understanding, it's, it's gone, I don't know where it went into, but it went into something that's active. So hopefully that'll get going.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
No, sir.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.